Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Today is October 29th, 2020 at 7:04 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order pursuant to the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated March 16th, 2020. The Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the HCAT webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I ask that all participants remotely attending, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. At this time, a roll call attendance will be taken. Mr. Morton?
Present.
Ms. Koshin?
Present.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Present.
Ms. Naborsky?
Present.
Mrs. Raffey?
Present.
At this time, I'll accept a motion to approve participating remotely for this meeting.
Moved by Cynthia?
Seconded by Andy.
By Cynthia, seconded by Andy. All in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. All right. Good evening, all. I'm going to dive right into the agenda. It is our public comment section, so I'm going to start with the committee. Mrs. Listevnik, I believe you had mentioned you would like to speak during public comments, so I turn it over to you.
From last week? What did I want to mention from last week? You caught me off guard because we're starting with me now. I wanted to remind people to head out to vote November 3rd. There's still early voting happening till tomorrow, I believe, the 30th, and then voting on Tuesday. My daughter and I will be counting ballots afterwards. I wanted to thank the nursing staff for doing a fantastic job of getting our kids flu vaccines despite the fact that our own town couldn't manage to get that one together this year, but we were able to pick it up and run with that, and I really appreciate Lynn Bowler taking the lead on that. And I think that's it for me right now, Stacy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other?
That's not it. I'm sorry. Halloween. So I know that you all have heard Chief's message that probably came to your home phone, your cellphone, and maybe an email and all those things, and I just, I want people to be really, really careful about what they decide to do for Halloween this year. Folks in the Queens, just so you know, like, I'm out, I'm COVID closed this year, so there will be no full-size bars at my location this year, and I hope whatever you do, you decide to do that safely and in a very small couple of kids over, stay around the fire pits, roast some marshmallows, and enjoy, and live to fight another day. Thank you.
Anybody else on the committee? Lisa?
Just a quick thank you to all the administrators, teachers, staff, for keeping us open this long. I honestly didn't know what to expect when we started, and I'm thrilled that we've been able to stay open as long as we have, and I hope we are able to continue it for a little while longer. But as Cynthia just pointed out, I think Halloween might be a big test of that, so yeah, everybody, please, stay safe. I think it's worth noting, I put this in the newsletter this week, but I think it's worth noting at this point that we don't have any documented cases of spread in the schools. There have been a couple of cases in the schools, but we don't have any evidence that they are spread in the schools, which tells us that, you know, the masks are working, the social distancing is working, all the wiping down surfaces is working. So a huge thank you to, I mean, if I start naming names, but definitely want to just single out Mr. Boudet and Lynn Bowler, the head of our nursing staff and all the nursing staff, because I know there's a ton of work that goes into this, and I know there are a lot of people involved, but we're doing something right. So I think that that's something that, you know, we should congratulate everybody on, but at the same time, I hope the public realizes that if that works in schools, it can work at home. So if you wear your masks and socially distance, hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll be able to keep the schools open a little while longer. That's it.
Dawn?
I'll be pretty brief, but I just wanted to say thank you to CPAC for running their event last Saturday evening. They had the pumpkin decorating event. They had at least 29 pumpkins there. It was a contest. I think there was first, second, and third place winners, so that was a great event that our community was lucky to have. Also, a big thanks to Rams, the Robert Adams Middle School, teachers and administrators for putting on a remote open house. It was a great opportunity to meet our students, our children's teachers, and thank you. And then finally, we are four weeks into the high school fall sports season, and it's been great. I mean, it's just be able to see kids out there at cross-country meets, to watch boys and girls soccer that's being broadcasted over HCAT. So to all of those high school athletes, thank you so much. Thank you for wearing your masks and participating, for the coaches that are working with this crew, for the athletic director, and just a huge thank you to all of the teachers, coaches, administrators that have been part of that. It's really helped our kids, so thanks.
Andy, did you have anything tonight? No? Okay. And, you know, I echo the sentiments about the back-to-school nights, and I believe, I'm pretty certain, each building and every grade has had their back-to-school night. So we did it, another milestone, like, we ought to keep celebrating the milestones, right? So, you know, thank you to all who are, you know, working triple and, you know, quadruple time here. Great work, everyone. Peter, do you have anything from central office?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, recognize all of our staff and administrators for the remarkable work they're doing during this extraordinary time, as well as the kids. It's just, you know, going through millenplacent, you know, I've been there a lot, and the kids are doing a great job with the social distancing and with their masks and really following routines, plus the energy as far as the kids, you know, enjoying being there is awesome. I get to be, help out with preschool dismissal a lot, and the kids, even at that age, keeping their masks on and following routines and just, you know, enjoying being there, and it's been great. I also got to spend a day at the middle school. Mr. Jordan needed to be out one day, and so I popped over there and worked in my old office for the day and got around to all the classrooms that had their doors open, which were quite a few, which was nice, and to see the teachers orchestrating their, you know, they have their iPads, and then they have their laptops, and then they have another monitor, and then they're rolling them on carts from class to class in between class, and it's, they're doing an extraordinary job, you know, managing that. It's exhausting for sure, and, you know, I do get concerned about burnout, but what they're doing with smiles on their faces is great. And again, the kids were remarkable as well, as far as just, you know, being engaged, but also, you know, just really following the different precautions that we need to put in place. So, you know, just thank you to everyone for what they're doing.
Right. And Peter, I know it's not really on the agenda, but do you want to say anything briefly about Tuesday's professional day?
Yeah, well, it's coming together. It's, you know, it's a really combination of, there's definitely some ongoing work around technology integration, so people, you know, had a lot of upfront PD during those first 10 days, and they've been getting some ongoing support, but as they try to hone their skills, and especially at the elementary level, try to dig into some of that more, so there's a lot around that. And then trying to be as kind of as responsive as possible, so there's a lot of work around, you know, different groups working, how do you integrate technology and teaching a hybrid environment in this context? So there'll be a lot of, you know, in addition to a bunch of, you know, offerings that either are mandatory or optional for folks, there'll be a lot of work in small groups with consultation from various people with various expertise, whether it's the tech integration folks or curriculum leaders in order to support the work. And then at the elementary, in the combination of the tech integration work, there's also going to be some key work done, again, with Cynthia Merrill around the literacy readers' workshop. And again, as I said before, she's the perfect match for this really challenging time because she's a technology expert as well as a literacy expert, so she brings both of those to the table and really can talk fluidly about how do you do a reader's workshop, whether you're in person with kids or whether you're in a hybrid environment where you have kids remote, you know, two or three days a week. So teachers, I think, are looking forward to the time to kind of take a breath and jump into that work.
Great, great, thank you. Keith, do you have anything? Susan, did you want to say anything now, or actually, we can just jump right into your update if you'd like?
Yeah, I have a bunch of different things I wanted to just briefly touch upon. I'm going to be sending out a weekly, end-of-the-week update tomorrow, just kind of summarizing a lot of things that are going on, but I want to start by saying, I personally am really trying to focus on the positive because there's a lot of positive going on, there's a lot of negativity around us, there's a lot of anxiousness, things are not great at the state level, things are not great at the local level as far as COVID-19, things are increasing in a negative way. However, we are still doing a great job at school for our students. As you mentioned, a couple of you about the virtual nights, all four schools had incredible open-house virtual nights, and what I was hearing is that, while it was unusual, they were by far the very, so very well attended because people didn't have to worry about babysitters, they could attend with both mother and father, maybe grandparents could be in the background if they live with them, so it was something that could be attended by many more people, so that, the positives that came of that were incredible, and teachers were, in many cases, had done great recordings, trying to bring their classroom to life, whether in a remote setting or in their, what their classroom looks like on a daily basis, so those were great things to hear. And then I do want to mention, and I'll be saying this tomorrow as well, we are at that point where we can, parents may want to request a change to the child's learning model, and we do have limitations because we are providing a very rigorous five-day-a-week in-person model, whether you're remote, hybrid, or, I'm sorry, not in-person, we're having direct instruction five days a week for pre-K to 12, which is quite unusual and rigorous to, and quite challenging to put that together on a daily basis, but by 11:09, we do need parents to decide if they would like to request a change to their child's platform, and each school will be sending out a different way of capturing that information. Yesterday, I met with our athletic director and high school principal to discuss sports, just kind of getting a quick update for you, and sports are going great right now for the sports that are able to be in session. The next, the next level of sports could take place after Thanksgiving. However, I want to caution you, obviously, as the changes are happening, it remains to be seen whether or not we will be able to perform that level of sports for the next session, because as you can see, the data is rising and it may be taken out of our hands. You know, things are good right now as far as the school settings and kids are coming to school, we're quarantining as necessary, but we do still see that things are changing quickly. And the next thing I did want to show, I just wanted to share my screen for a minute. I've been working on a, I know that some of the districts have been doing data dashboards, and when we didn't have a lot of data to share, when we just had one or two cases, we didn't necessarily need to do that. Oh, actually, Keith, could you give me sharing rights? I'm not able to share. I didn't have a lot to share, to show the data, but now we have had an increase. We've had 13 cases in the past two weeks. We typically do a two-week look back because that's when that quarantine period over the two weeks, so I went back to the range of October 16th to through October 29th tonight, and this data is fresh off the press, that you can see the new dashboard is showing the number of cases currently with the two-week look back at each school for a total of 13. The cumulative cases for the schools are 16 for all four buildings since we've been open. You can see we made a graph. I wanted to note some of the, you can see we had on, after the weekends is when we seemed to have some more upticks on October 26th, when we had a, this past Monday, we had six cases, which was the largest we've had so far, so I am seeing a notable change after the weekends. There's another chart here showing, as of tonight, we have the last, out of the last six weeks, we are now five out of those six are red, so we are three weeks in a row, and we've gone from 9.3 out of 100,000 to 13 out of 100,000 cases, makes us stay in the red, and that's not good. What I will say, this is not the positive that I want to have, the glass is half-full, but on this part, Chief Cassidy did give us a little information. We're not seeing what we had in the early days when school started. We were seeing that there were larger cohorts of cases at one facility. Now we are seeing a trend that we've had individual cases at 11 different homes and 28 cases in the community are spread over 18 homes in total. So the worry about that is that the community is not able to isolate where it's coming from specifically, but I will say what we've seen on the school side is the cases that are coming in from outside, whether it be, you know, a relative that someone's living with or a close contact they had outside of school, and then when we hear about it, we're doing our best to try to maintain that quickly, find out any close contacts, deal with it quickly, quarantine as soon as possible, and we have not seen any additional spread yet, as Lisa mentioned. So if a family member has tested positive and then we remove the family members in school, then those family members, if they test positive, have not led to additional cases of other students or staff at this time, so that's the good news. And then we are seeing, I'm going to show you the second page here, tomorrow we'll have a little more ability to work on this map. We're still trying to get some of the glitches out. This is the map from mass.gov, and you can see Holliston is blocked right now, it's underneath that little box, but you can see there's a lot more red around us, and certainly the South Shore in general, different areas, there's a lot more red coming and yellow as well, so that is concerning. We're not able to narrow down what the concerns are coming from specifically, so lot, lot to worry about, but trying to stay focused on the positive that we're able to come to school every day. And then the other thing I wanted to show you is the family survey data. We got, that was sent out on October 15th, and I collected the data by October 22nd. We asked parents to submit for each child separately because some kids could be in an in-person five-day-a-week model, some kids could be hybrid, some kids could be remote, and that could happen in the same families. We wanted to tease out what was going well, where there might be some struggles, and we had 1,700 responses, which means data was reported for 1,700 students, which was incredible. That's quite a large data, and I will, this quickly, because I am going to send it out for afternoon, but in general, we had a section that was on all our full-remote students and the instructional hours that they're putting in, people are saying that they're getting a scarce amount of hours for their students. We're seeing that the workload, they're saying they think it's either sufficient or some would like a little bit of an increase, but 66% are saying that it should stay the same, so they've, in general, on a scale of one to five, we're seeing about 76% are on the positive end of how they would rate remote instruction so far. Technology and different things, we tried to tease out where the concerns are, so that will, I'll let you look at that tomorrow, since there's a lot to share there. How independent children are being in general in remote, about 72, 73%. In general, about the, on a remote, 64%, it's the right amount of range challenge, and then the 9% somewhat too little, but still all positive, 64%. Personal connection with teachers, they felt that 55, 50, 60, 90% felt either adequately connected or somewhat connected, so that's a good amount of connection with their teachers. In general, this is one area that we want to tease into. We asked about social emotional supports. Most have said that they didn't, they didn't access social emotional support, so the question is, are they feeling that they're not available, or do they just not need them? So that's something each school can dig into on their own when they tease into the data a little bit more. Overall satisfaction, 74% were either very satisfied or somewhat satisfied with the remote platform. And then the next one, we did the same thing with hybrid, but changed it a little bit to fit that. Same thing, adequate, good amount of instructional hours happening. 66% would like the workload to stay the same. In-person days during it would be 78% are looking on the high range of how the in-person days are going, and about 50% are rating the remote instructional days on the high end, so we noticed, we noticed that. In-person days is a different connection than remote, it's, unfortunately, there are some limitations there, but our full-remote students are doing pretty well with that. If you look at independence level here again, it's about 70. On the rigor again, over 60% said it's the round of rigor. Personal connection again is on the high. Adequate, somewhat connected to teachers, 84%, 85%. Social emotional, same thing again, not sure if it's just that we've had so much else to do and not been accessing it, or that we need to do something to kind of disseminate and share social emotional supports. Overall satisfaction, the hybrid, again, high, very satisfied or somewhat satisfied, we're looking at 68%, so that's really good data. I mean, we're really pleased to see that people are working well in their remote, and then less questions for full-in-person, but same thing, would you like the workload to stay the same? And stay the same is about 40% here in the in-person. How would you rate person instruction? Again, very high marks there, 65, 72, 8, 92%, because clearly, in-person is a lot more in-person contact that you can have, even in the safety procedures that we have to put in place. Rigor here, 79%, they're assessing that it's the right amount of rigor for evidence. And same thing here, high marks on personal connection, adequate or somewhat connected are very high, 78, 96% there, so they're really strong marks. Same thing with social emotional, something that we'll need to look into more. Again, it doesn't mean it's not going well, it's just whether or not the families or students have needed to access. Overall satisfaction, very satisfied, 75%, and 9% somewhat satisfied. So, you know, this is really strong data, because to be able to run three platforms, K to three, five days a week in person, four to 12 is hybrid, but they're getting five days a week of some direct instruction of teachers, and then our remote students are getting five days a week of direct instruction as well. So to see that positive data coming back, it's just, again, the glass is more than half-full, the teachers are doing an excellent job, the administration is also doing an excellent job, and we just want to keep this going as long as possible, we need the community support for that, because unfortunately, the community spread is there, you know, 13 cases I mentioned in the last two weeks, not huge numbers for the amount of students we have, but it's just showing an increase that could lead to change in the future. Halloween this weekend, as Cynthia said, is a worry. Thanksgiving right around the corner, we want to stay open as long as possible, keep our kids in-person or hybrid as long as possible, so, you know, anything we can do, anything, any strategy we can come up with, we're willing to do it for our kids. I think that's it for me.
Susan, that was, that was really helpful and really good data. I just, before we talk about any of the data, could you give some examples about how we can help mitigate community spread? So one of the things that I've noticed, actually, I noticed this the other day, when the children are being dismissed from school, there's a lot of students who are walking either to another location to be picked up or whatnot. Not all of them are staying distant, and one thing that I saw, so parents, this is just a, you know, make sure you talk to your kids about this, kids were squirting their water bottles at one another, like, that's probably one of the worst you could do. So I think we just need to give prompts to people about some of the other ways that we can help mitigate this, because it's not just about wearing your mask and washing your hands and hypnotizing, it's, you know, not doing things like taking a sip of your water bottle and spitting it at a friend, it's not, you know, wrestling down Woodland Street as you're walking down the street. And I understand, these are children, and our, you know, our natural instinct is to be close and be social or whatever, but these are some of the things that I think, you know, I just think we need to remind one another, so if you have other suggestions or tips, that would be helpful too, because, you know, we're not thinking about it, right?
Yeah, I think it was Friday that I tried to hit all four levels in the same day, because it's interesting when you travel from pre-K to 12 in the same day and see the differences, and I was in the pre-K classes first, and I took some pictures because the kids were doing a much better job than I think people realize they do. Don't forget, you've got the whole class doing the same thing, the teachers are doing it, the administrators are doing it. If a child has a mask falling below the nose, I've heard the administrator saying, on your nose, or just a little, you know, finger up, and the kids just perform. Are there some exceptions? Yes, there are some children who have challenges, but that positive reinforcement is always in place. And again, the peer modeling, we see they're matching to their outfits, so the little ones had their mask on and were doing the distancing, I saw them waiting to go in their cubby, they have little marks to stand on. Is it restrictive? Yes, but it's working, it's keeping them in school, and the pros are definitely outweighing the cons. So I stopped to take a picture in one classroom, and when I left, the teacher said to the students, do you know why the superintendent was here? And they said, yes, she sees that we're doing a good job in keeping safe, and she wanted to take a picture of that. I said, absolutely, that's exactly it, because I don't think people realize, because they don't always perform the same outside of school, and I can say this from experience, I taught for 15 years, and I think I was a pretty good teacher. My, one of my three children was the worst student I have ever had in CCD, because they don't always perform the way they do for parents, because it's a safe space, and they want to please their teachers in a different way, it's just, it's just the name of the beast. So that's a good thing. In school, they're doing a great job. How do we replicate that out in the community? Modeling and wearing those masks. You still have to do that, even if you're in your neighborhood and you have your safe spaces, because if you have 20 people in your neighborhood that you're surrounded by and you feel safe with, well, they might have 25 other people outside, so start doing the math on 25 by 25, you know, it just goes on and on and on. So it's being safe, only ten percent in, getting, too close of space, the distancing is working, the sanitizing is working, we're doing the fogging as much as possible, but when students leave, they, they're bad people, or it doesn't mean our adults are being bad, but we let down our guard sometimes in a less controlled environment, and I don't know how to contain that, I just think we rate it and say, it's working when we're performing these things, as restrictive as it is, it's worth it.
Appreciate that, thank you. Ann Louise?
Sorry. And I'll apologize because I know I missed the intro and the setup to the survey results. So first of all, Susan, I just want to thank you and the administration for doing this, for tabulating it and analyzing the information, it's incredibly helpful. I just had a couple of quick questions, and if you introduced it this way, I apologize. Was the survey taken just by parents or by students as well?
So we wanted to do one to start the year off, because I know parents had asked for that and you had asked for that, so this was a parent survey, but we asked them to do it for each of their students separately, in case they had different learning models or different experiences at different grade levels. But I am, I've already started working on a staff survey. I'm trying to kind of replicate something similar, but I thought I'd have it ready for tomorrow, but it's becoming a little more cumbersome than I had planned on, but I want to do something similar for staff, but make it anonymous so that they can feel comfortable sharing to find out what their experiences are like, and I know from talking with the building president, some of our high school working on a survey students, so we've asked them to try to do a, we'll be able to be used at most, so that, these are all coming out shortly, I don't know the dates for the survey, but I was hoping to have the staff survey out, if not tomorrow, or next week.
So I'd like to suggest or actually ask that the students, first of all, I fully recognize your third grader isn't going to fill out a survey like this, but I do think your high school students could. And so I'd really like to see, I'd have to go through all the questions, but many of these questions, maybe even most of these questions, asked of the students, because I think often there's a different perspective from the students' own learning experiences versus that of the parent, and neither is more valid or important, because they both bring a different perspective, but I do really value what bring a different perspective, but I do really value what the students have to say about their own learning experience, especially as they, you know, become young adults and are able to articulate what is and is not working for them. And I think it'd be very important to have that perspective and be able to compare some of the data. So I'd, I'd really like to not reinvent a brand-new survey for students. If there are questions that we think are, you know, specific to a student learning experience, that you wouldn't have asked of parents, then absolutely, just want to make sure that, um, things like, do they feel connected to their teachers? Maybe they do, or maybe they don't. And that is one question I really think is important to hear from the student's perspective, and their ability to work independently, you know, do they feel like they're able to do that or not? So those, those are some things that I think would be very helpful to understand. So I guess I'd encourage you to use the survey we've got as a baseline to figure out which questions would not be relevant, which questions really would and should be asked of students as well. So that was sort of the, I guess that's really the overarching comment, I had some specific questions, but I can go back and look at the data, so, thank you.
Yeah, and, and we got hundreds and hundreds of comments, because we left a bottom section on each for parents to comment as well. And some of the comments were that they asked their child to do the survey, they asked them the questions when they were doing it, so I can't tell you how many, but so younger ones did do that, and hopefully they did it with the older ones, I don't know, but I don't disagree with you. And I think that's what the, the student surveys that they, the student want to develop, they were looking at trying to replicate some of this, so I certainly will suggest that to the principals, because they'll be sending it out from their building level. And, go ahead.
Yeah, I know that, I know at the high school and middle school level, they're using this survey as the, as the starting point, but then, yeah, there's a team of high school students that are, that really want to be involved in helping to form the questions, so they're adding some additional questions or tweaking questions as well.
Yeah, and I just, oh, sorry, Cynthia, there's one thing, one thing I didn't want to forget to say is that, I saw a comment, I couldn't read, again, there were hundreds, and I was trying to get the data pulled out and, you know, the graphs put in, so I could show them in a meaningful way. But when I was looking at the comments, there were a few places I saw comments such as, I don't think it's right that you're asking us to evaluate our, this, our child's teacher, that's not my place to evaluate the teacher. And I thought, that was not the intention of the survey, so I want to clarify that, and I'll hopefully try to embed that in my communication tomorrow. The intent of the survey was, was to see how our reopening model going in the remote learning platform, in the hybrid learning platform, in the full-in-person model. It was, it was not evaluative of individual teachers, we didn't ask for teacher names, there is some ability to give us grade level, but that's only be helpful if, if it's not in-person in a certain grade level, but the child's full in person, understands the thing from, so ask those questions, but none of it was targeted at trying to evaluate teachers, really trying to evaluate the whole reopening model and how it's working in each platform.
And then, I just want to reiterate, that's not why I was asking, this, I, I hundred percent agree, I wasn't asking for students to do this so that they could be evaluating anybody or anything other than their own learning experience, because I think when, when you listen to students speak, oftentimes they not only can say, you know, what's working, what's not, but they have brilliant suggestions based on their own learning experience that might be helpful. So, you know, we're doing something completely brand-new and unprecedented, and I think we should all look at this as an opportunity for continuous improvement, and nothing more.
Absolutely, yes, and I, and I wasn't commenting from what you said, I honestly just was, it was something that I was thinking of when I read the comments, that there seemed to be a few people that were confused as to how we were using the survey results. Cynthia, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, I was just briefly looking through the data, it seemed like a lot of people weren't accessing social emotional supports, and I wonder whether we needed to kind of tease out more, but more specifically, I think what we're talking about when we mention that. And I think for a student survey, that would be, you know, actually be more directive as to what we're specifically, like, have you been to counseling, et cetera, might be helpful in the survey, just because it seems like, I, I was looking at it going like, well, I'm not sure what you meant by that, so I just said, we're all good.
Yeah, and I think that's why I, I thought I'd be able to come up with the staff survey similarly, but it wasn't fitting, and that's why I'm struggling a little bit, so that's why I don't want to, I don't want to just rush and do the survey if it's not, if I can't get the right questions and information, so I need to work probably with Dr. Rotello and maybe some of the principals, just because I want, I want the survey to be meaningful, and I want staff to be to share how they're feeling about how things are going as well.
Dawn, did you have a question?
Great, thanks.
Um, yes, a question and also a comment, not on the survey, so before we moved on to this, was anyone else want to talk about the survey? Okay. Is it possible to share, for me to have the ability to share my screen?
Keith will do that for you, because he's, okay, you should be okay, be able to share now, Dawn.
Okay, I have two screens, Keith, so if I click on the second one, will it? I, I don't see that I can. Oh, I got it. And, okay. Okay. Do you guys see what I see? Do you see the parent guidelines?
Yes.
Okay. My question on the parent guidelines, just something I want to bring up for discussion, is, right now, if we have a household member who's waiting for test results, they are not part of the call the school nurse, stay home crew. And I guess my question is, would it be possible, or can we at least talk about, what if you're two of these things? What if you're a household member that's waiting for test results, and you are sick, you have some COVID symptoms? If we, if we combined number one and number three, could we turn it into a situation where you call the school nurse and you stay home? I just, I did want to bring that up for discussion. And I want to distinguish that there might be some household members, like teachers, private schools or other public schools, where they're testing weekly. So that might not be the reason for them to keep their kids home, but I feel like it would be reasonable if you went for a test and you were awaiting results and you had symptoms, to strongly consider keeping your students home. Do you want me to stop sharing, or should I leave it up?
Why did you, no, you, hey, oh, if, and I'm glad.
Dawn, can you, oh, okay, I was gonna say share it bigger, but that's fine, it's fine, that's okay.
Working this, actually, I met with the nurse yesterday, the poor nurses never thought they'd have such regular seconds with the superintendent, but it's necessary, and they're very open and helpful, and they asked to meet with me, but we frequently meeting to, because these things are starting to increase on the community spread, we are considering modifying those very chain, some of the chain you're referring to. What we've seen so far, as I started to allude to earlier, is that the, when we, we have had, first, whatever it is, call the nurse and then say, I may have been a close contact, I'm, I'm not symptomatic, what did I do? Based on the guidelines we've been using, the CDC guidelines, it does not say that if you're a secondary contact, such as a student to a family member or a staff member to a family member, that you need to stay home. What's happening, though, we've, what we've seen is, the cases where we've heard someone say, I'm a close contact, I need to quarantine and stay home, and someone, whether it's a family member or a staff member, has come to school, it takes a couple of days for them to get results. And then by the time we get the results, we have had cases where the family member, staff member or student has been positive, and now we quarantine them, and then we have to say, takes in school. The good note, good news is that so far, none of the close contacts we have identified to the person in, in-person in school have tested positive, so that's great, right? However, there's that delay, and I worry that that could start happening. So this is something we've talked very much about, but it's going to be more restrictive, and it will put more people potentially into quarantine situations for the great, for the good of the larger cause, right? So I'm in the process of working on that, and I was going to be talking to you about that shortly. Again, with Halloween coming, with Thanksgiving coming, these are worries that we have, but then, if we start saying, the data is showing that contacts outside of school are coming into school but not spreading into school, and we could start there, what do I do if I have a close contact in school? Do we then siblings home from school, even though we haven't seen that spread? This is where it gets tricky, and it gets complicated for people in what we're asking them to do. So that's, that's what I'm trying to prioritize with the nurses, I'll probably be with our infectious disease nurse on the town side as well, because we are moving restrictive because we have to, the community spread starts to decrease, I don't really have a choice.
Susan, you keep cutting out, do you want to disconnect for a minute and try to reconnect just because it's like that Verizon commercial, like, are you there, are you there?
Can you give me if I have my video off for a minute? Maybe I'll try that.
No, it's still, nah, it's still choppy. I'm not trying to kick you out, I just, maybe reboot will help you.
I mean, most of it came through. I think most of it came through, she doesn't have to repeat herself.
Yeah, but she's been breaking up for a while.
She's been breaking up through the whole meeting, is, was my issue. And I would just say, like, when in doubt, keep your kid out. I mean, we need to just be abundantly cautious.
We need to get more conservative as we go into this next couple of months, because they're saying that it's going to be, you know, we're heading into a really difficult period over the next couple of months. And they're saying that nationally, you can see it in our numbers, you can see it in the statewide numbers, we need to get more conservative if we want to keep the schools open. And just think about having your little angels, if you need inspiration, think about having your angels home all day, every day again, like we did in the spring, and hopefully that will inspire you to wear masks inside. It's, it's weird, it's awkward to wear masks when you have friends over, but you can do it, we can all do it.
And get your flu shot. All parents should get their flu shot, too.
And we had heard, I think back in August or September, that it was either the department, either, either DESI or DPH would have mobile testing units for schools that had, I believed it was a number of cases, but I think now it is if there is spread in the schools. But I do think it's something that we may want to continue to reach out on. We are now a red community for five out of six weeks, we are a red community for three consistent weeks. If, i- if DESI, the commissioner initially put something out about the mobile testing unit, so Susan, to the degree that they would make that available for our teachers or our students, in, in a community where, I think we just saw another four cases since yesterday, the update from DPH this evening was that we've had something like twenty-five cases in fourteen days. So if we can try and get a mobile testing unit as cases go up, we might be able to get a better handle on this and keep the schools open for longer.
So that's something that we all, as school committee members, need to advocate for as well, you know, in terms of the state level, but I know Susan reached out about the, the testing and was told that we didn't quote-unquote call, qualify based on our numbers, and, and it wasn't a school spread. That was the last that I had heard from Susan, I know she, she's not, she got bumped out again, so she's not going to answer you, Dawn, because she's not here.
Yeah, I know, I know she has reached out to that, we, we at this point don't qualify, but we're staying in contact with that agency to continue to monitor whether, when we would be qualifying for that.
Thank you very much.
And Peter, can you, can you confirm, I think the middle school might have already done a survey today, because my own children actually reported when they got in the car that they had done a survey.
I, I'm, I'm not sure, I knew, I know that the, the schools were working on it, but I, I didn't have a, a date on the middle school one, so that could have happened, I'm not sure.
But I wouldn't take what my fourteen-year-old says as gospel either, so I'm just, I don't want to spoil, you know, spread a rumor, I just, that's what was reported to me.
And I, I think we have also seen some concern from families that have students in the remote program, of additional kids coming in to the remote program, possibly temporarily, I think, because of a quarantine, or having to quarantine, or, or be a close contact in quarantine, so they're temporarily coming into a remote class. Are there, I guess, what is the class size cap for those remote classes? Do we have one?
Dawn, while they're looking that up, I think there's two issues, one is the class size, and the other is the in-and-out disruptiveness of students coming in, trying to get integrated with a whole new teacher in classroom group, and then pulling out again, so that's what I observed in the feedback.
Yes.
Dawn, while we don't have a hard class size cap, it is a difficult thing to manage, because in many cases, students are coming into the classroom temporarily and then leaving the classroom when they, you know, if, if everything goes well with their testing, so it, it's kind of a different thing to manage, we actually have started some internal conversations, Susan can talk more to this, some internal conversations on how to address that issue, so.
Susan, we were just bringing up, in terms of if a, a student is a close contact or has to go into quarantine for some reason, and they leave the hybrid program temporarily, and they're being moved into a remote classroom, just talking to, to get a better idea of how many kids might move into those remote classrooms, meaning if, are they capped out at a certain number? I understand the shift is temporary, and it's, and, and it's done, I think, to be able to offer programs like hybrid in-person, and also be able to offer a separate remote program. But do we have a sense of how many kids could be shifted into those remote classrooms?
We haven't had a talk about what the actual number is, because it hadn't been too much, but as you can tell, recently it's starting to increase. So this is something we had met with our administrators yesterday, and we did talk about this conversation, so it's a problem that we're working on right now. Sometimes it seems, sometimes it's one or two kids coming in for a short amount of time. The other thing is, we've identified some ideas of potentially if we had a group of students who may not be in the same grade, but maybe we could provide them remote instruction, but have them be, so you might have a multi-age group with one instructor, could be a building sub or something, but the teachers would still provide work for the students so that they would get the support remotely, but the direct work would come from the teachers, and that might be a better way to go, because that would help us with these situations that are one-off and temporary. However, as you know, we're still having trouble filling the position, so it's not an unwillingness to do so, but it's, it's the ability to find some people that we need to fill those positions, because that would be a perfect example, something that I think would solve that type of a temporary problem, and still get the instruction and get the support that the childrens need until they return to class. So it's certainly something that we're working on, don't have a solution yet, the numbers haven't gone beyond a reasonable amount yet, but again, that's what I worry. We're already having conversations, parents are asking about, well, if I go out of state to a red state, for example, because of a, a holiday or weekend or something, will my child be able to go into a remote platform? I can't promise you that they will. If we get to the point that we cannot provide that direct instruction experience because the numbers are too high and we don't have the staff to man it, then we may have to say no, especially if you're making a decision that may not be the best decision to make. Now, of course, there are emergencies, we know that people might have exceptions to every rule, and they can talk to us about that, but I just, we can't water down the instructional model to the point that it's not good for anybody. We're not there yet, and we're hoping to find a solution for that before we get to that point, but we don't have the ability, if we have one remote teacher, for example, per grade level, then what happens if five, six kids more join? We can't just pull another teacher and put them in a remote, because there's still kids in person. So it's a dilemma, and again, this is one of the limitations of trying to provide the five-day week in the direct instruction that we're giving, it's a very rigorous, positive experience, but then it gets tricky when you run into situations like that, so we do have to problem-solve a bit more about it. So I can't tell you what the cap is yet, because we haven't gotten to the, that tipping point, but we do know that's something we have to resolve.
Thank you.
Catherine, did you have a question? I saw your hand.
Yeah, so I just, to what Dawn was talking about, I, I understand the question about caps, and I know you don't, you can't answer that in its entirety, but I don't know if, I don't know if the caps is the, the whole issue, it's certainly part of it, but that, I mean, even if it's a slow drip, where there's one kid in, one kid out, one kid in, one kid out, the disruption to the poor teachers who have developed the flow of the class, that, that they, I'm concerned about supporting the teachers in their quest to keep the flow of the class going, while also onboarding a new kid, I mean, possibly every day, right? Or three times a week? I just wonder if there's, if there's like a working group possibility, or a focus group or something, where, where the teacher- I just wonder if there's, if there's like a working group possibility or a focus group or something where, where the teachers can share ideas or we can help the teachers, support the teachers to find ideas to keep the flow going so that we can keep adding in one kid, putting, taking them out, adding it, like that to me is, it's gotta be a nightmare for the teachers where they've always got a new kid coming in, that they're never gonna get back to the, the same rhythm that they had established already.
Yeah, one of the things we've talked about, that we're trying to give autonomy to the grade-level teachers so that they can problem solve together as well. Because in, in some cases, the teachers themselves are coming up with the solutions and they're saying, we think it's best for X to happen. We're trying to give them that input because I really think that's the best way, they, they often make the decisions, cause they're the ones that have worked with the groups. And what we're also trying to do is, while we don't wanna have instruction be identical in every room, because we have to differentiate for student needs, but given the needs of COVID and these unique situations, we're trying to have them align and they are working to align so that we can have some of those seamless transitions that they are temporary. So the teacher's doing a great job with it and they understand the intricacies of it. But, you know, there, there could be a time when they're not able to accommodate it and I think they're, having those conversations with administrators, if they don't think it's working, I, I've been in a couple of meetings myself, that she said, it's not working with this, so this is what we came up in, can we try this? And we've said, yes, try it, but let's not just, if it's not working, we're not gonna just live with it, we're gonna rethink it again. So these are all works in progress and, and you're right, none of this is easy. You know, having worked in a school that was very transient, in-person model myself, I remember just seeing, just because it was a transit school in a year, I, I had twenty-three students, but I think I only had ten of them when I counted in the year with the original students, so there was a lot of trends throughout the year, and that goes with challenges, this is very unique and those short-term things can be challenging. But the flip side is, what do we do with that child who through no fault of their own has to stay home? For whatever reason, they, they had a close contact situation, maybe they did nothing, but just exist. And now, we need to provide them a free, appropriate public education, so this is that dilemma, we wanna do the best for all children pre-K to twelve. And we struggle to try to do that in, in these unique situations. So it's not something we're taking lightly and we are working to problem solve. But I think the best way to do it is let the teachers in that grade level have those conversations and get the administrators to have those conversations with them as well.
Lisa? Have there any, been any conversations about if we get to X number of cases? Or at what point would we talk about either closing the schools or maybe, you know, starting to bring more kids virtual?
So I, what's happened already is that whether it's because of staff or students, sometimes close contact, various situations, if we get to a situation where the staffing ratios are not adequate for the model that's in place, then that could be having that classroom go virtual, and you've seen that already, it could be having a grade level go virtual. It could be having a school go virtual, that is something we wanna really think. We don't wanna look at it as one extreme or the other, so we're not saying that if we had a problem at Placentino, we're gonna shut down the whole district. So this is what we really, we really are trying to isolate and try to do what's best. And if things are going perfectly seamlessly in one building, leave things alone, but looking at them in an individual case and you have no idea how many conversations go into these decisions, because it's not, it's not my decision, it's really a a collective decision, that, you know, working with the Board of Health, working with Chief Cassidy, infectious disease nurses, all of the nurses, the principals, Dr. Patello, Keep a Day, I mean, we try to have multiple conversations, but as far as those changes, there, each case is unique and we do take them one at a time and not have a blanket answer for them, which is good, you know, but it does require a lot of thought process. And yes, they could get to that point, if, if we can't, if we get to a tipping point in a grade level, then maybe we do have to make a decision to say this grade level's gonna have to be remote for a couple of weeks. But you, you don't want to try to restrict more students than you need to as well.
No, absolutely, I, I definitely appreciate that approach. Um, I was just wondering if, you know, as people hear these numbers about community spread, if there's any sort of number that you guys have talked about as a, as a tipping point? And if not, that's totally fine too, I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's any sort of, you know, metric that we can talk about.
Yeah, I, I, the message from the state level, from the commissioner level, from the surrounding communities, before it was three weeks in a row red. Now, that's not what we're saying, because what the data is showing, as I told you earlier about the data is not showing transmission from student to student in school. That's the good, right? But the problem is, it still creates scenarios that it's, it, we could have staffing issues, we could have too many students in quarantine, you know, so all of those play into this, but I think the, the longer we can go day by day and we keep decision by decision, it's, it's it's overall, it's working well and we don't have a definitive answer because each situation is so unique. And the commissioner also said that they're not seeing that transmission and the, the super spreaders are not schools, we're not the hotspots. Again, that could change, because if you start having spread in the community and the same people that are in school together are out in the community together, then it could look like it's spreading through the school as well, cause you won't be able to isolate it. So at some point, we may have to just say, we're gonna shut down a building or a grade level for a certain amount of time.
I think that's a really important point, Lisa, cause I know I've been asked it three times this week alone. There is not a trigger, if you will, to
Yeah, that's what I wanted to communicate to people.
There is, there is not a trigger and, and there shouldn't be, because it wouldn't make sense, because of what Susan just said. And the other question that I've gotten a couple of times that I think is really interesting, um, the district has no plans or hopes to stay in person until Thanksgiving or winter break, cause I, I've been asked that a couple of times. We want to be in person for as long as possible. So as long as it's safe, as long as people are following protocols, but I just, that's another point. We don't have a magic date that we wanna stay in school by, so I just, I hope that's clear for people as well. Um, Susan, can you clarify for me, cause this, I'm, I'm confused about based on some conversations? Strictly with the hybrid model grades four through twelve. If, if one of my children, I feel that he needs to stay home in quarantine for whatever reason, do I have the option of letting him stay home and remote in on the days when he's supposed to go in person? There's a little bit of confusion about that situation, can you clarify that?
It's, it's really about the communication from the parent to the administrator, sometimes it's through the nurse. When and if we have the ability in the room, because we just talked about earlier, if we have the room to allow them to remote in, then yes. But that has to have application, cause there's been some confusion there, because sometimes we've had a situation where a student who's on cohort A pops in on a, an in-person A day, they're popping in remotely and it confuses the teacher. So we're trying to really make sure that we're not stigmatizing people if they're home because they have to quarantine, that's a medical HIPAA protected situation. So we're trying to only say they're home for a medical reason, or sometimes people are making those choices. But I think the important thing is to make sure they communicate through the administrator, system principal, principal, because we may not, as the numbers rise up, we can't just fill up those remote numbers, so they may not be able to get that instruction and then we'd have to do more asynchronously, they'd have to get some work like they would on another regular sick day.
But aren't they already, I'm trying to figure it out, like, so I, I'm asking for grades four through twelve, but my only experience obviously is REM, so I, I'm, I don't mean to be an ignoramus about this. Right now, though, on the days that my children do not go to school, they are remoting into the classroom.
Yes, Stacy. In grades, in grades six through twelve, there's tremendous, like, pretty flexibility with that. If they're already part of a hybrid group, uh, grades four and five have, have a great deal of flexibility as well. Um, it's, it's, um, it's really more in the pre-K through three, where we don't have a hybrid scenario where it becomes more of a challenge.
Great, you know, and that was my question, grades four through twelve, so if you, so if I have a fourth or a fifth grader and I deem he or she, my child should stay home for whatever reason, my child should be able to remote into the classroom, correct?
Yes, I would say in most cases, I do, I just think if we end up having a, a number, it, it could be an imbalance and cause problems with the teacher to manage, if, if the bulk of the kids are remote, but she's still got a few kids in person. But yes, because of the model, in most cases they're able to manage that, I just don't know if that could shift to one way or the other. But the biggest part, as I mentioned, is the communication, because of the fact that the teachers get confused as to whether a child's just choosing to remote in, and we don't want people asking that question. If it's a medical situation, they should be talking through the nurses.
Okay, thank you.
Stacy, also, I think, um, at the high school level, there, in certain classes may not, it might be harder to do that. So for example, if, for like AP Chem, if on the days that they're supposed to be remote, they're doing some asynchronous work and then they're supposed to be doing their lab in person, if you started to try to go, there's, there isn't a bit, an ability to remote in on those days for them, so it would, might depend on class.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's helpful, and again, like you said, communication is key and obviously, parents should be communicating with the, the teachers, the admin, you know, the administrator, et cetera. Thank you for that, Dawn?
So we saw a change from the CDC about the fifteen minutes and the six feet. And the change was, it's no longer fifteen continuous minutes, it's now fifteen cumulative minutes. So my question is, i- is mostly directed towards our younger kids, our youngest learners. They'll be out at recess, they'll be having lunch, they'll be at snack, they'll be in the building for six hours. Are we concerned about the fifteen cumulative as opposed to continuous minutes? Who's tracking that? Because if they're out at recess, how do we know these youngest kids haven't spent six minutes here and seven minutes there and then another three minutes at lunchtime with someone? How, how does that work?
So about a month ago, Lynn Bowler and Chief Cassidy had both attended meetings and they started talking about this at the D P H level about the fact that they were looking at that aggregate, so we started having that conversation about contact tracing back then. So we've been using that thought process, so this is not new to us, is it challenging? Yes, it's not easy. And because it's challenging, the principals have been working even more so closely with the teachers. The kids go out, they have their towels, they set them up, they really have to keep eyes on kids a lot. And the kids may not like it that they're getting reminders constantly, but they're, because they're getting so used to it, they're doing a better job with that. The teachers do have input into the contact tracing for that reason, we're trying to protect HIPAA confidentiality. But we do need to find out, do you think any of students in your class, or do you think any adults in your class were over that full day? Or if a child was in two days, you, you might be going to the second day, to consider whether there was too much less than six-foot spacing between certain students or adults. Though the teachers are doing an awful good job just really trying to monitor and watch that, they're not checking boxes. It's really about knowing the habits and behaviors of certain students. And then if a student has a special need or a specific reason, a physical reason that they need more support, the teachers would know that maybe they had been within the six feet in that child and those teachers would be quarantining as well.
Thank you. Um, one other question. I saw that Milton High School had to go remote about two days ago for two weeks because of the number of staff that was in quarantine. How are we doing in terms of having subs, having COVID officers, having backup crew? I mean, is this something that we might see in our future? And I know, I'm not asking you to, I, I guess I am. If the numbers go up and we have staff that is quarantining as close contacts, would we then have to go remote for two weeks because we have a staff shortage?
We have had to do that already a little bit, so I'm not getting into specific examples, but that has happened already. So yes, I foresee that could definitely happen, but the good news is in some cases, we're able to have, the, the model is fluid in a lot of ways, because if a staff member is out but asymptomatic, they may be able to zoom into the class and still do the direct instruction with students, and then we would have a support staff member in class, so we are doing that. All year long, we've had people doing that, in and out, um, in that manner, and the teachers are kind of being, they're being able to jump back and forth in the platform. So the good news is, people aren't taking sick days like they used to, because they want to be with the students. And if they're not feeling sick, they are zooming in and still doing the direct instruction. But there are exceptions to every rule, you still need a physical body in the room, a person to monitor the students while the teacher is giving the instruction. So that does seem to be the next level of what we might be doing. It, the staff could drive it, so you'll see me sometimes say, send out communication, or the principal might send out communication to a specific grade level or class saying, due to staffing needs, we are going remote, and that is, yes, those things are drivers as well. We don't have enough subs as far as our building subs, we're still struggling to fill, as I mentioned, I think we still have eight or nine positions at Placentino that we haven't been able to fill, and we still have the problem of people accepting the positions and then not staying with the position for a variety of reasons.
Thank you.
And Louise? And then Catherine.
I had, this, this is a, not a hypothetical question, but I'm wondering, Susan, if you are aware of any efforts in Massachusetts? Or if we could be advocating for a contact tracing app, not for the younger kids, but frankly, for the, you know, the six to twelve crew that all carry cell phones. It's voluntary, but the reason I ask is, I think many of you know, I am right now living in New York. And there is an app called COVID Alert New York, it's been replicated for New Jersey and a couple of other states. And it was developed by Apple in combination with MIT and Google and the Department of Health for New York State. And the app silently and anonymously is constantly managing through Bluetooth, you know, where you are, where others are, and if somebody, um, somebody who, you know, you're in contact with that may not even realize it, for that cumulative fifteen minutes throughout a twenty-four-hour period, you will anonymously getting a ping encouraging you to go be tested or vice versa. And I think that's the kind of thing that makes contact tracing actually useful. Now granted, it requires people to voluntarily sign up for it, but it's just astonishing to me that MIT was at the heart of developing this thing and Massachusetts doesn't have the app.
Yeah, I've heard, yeah, we just had a meeting with the commissioner on Tuesday and have heard nothing about something like that in Massachusetts, that would be wonderful.
You should, you should look at it on the App Store, it is being used effectively in New York. And for those who aren't aware, New York City outside of the Hot Pockets in Brooklyn and Queens that are associated with specific community practices, New York City still, still has one of the lowest rates in the nation, which is kind of mind-boggling considering the population density.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm on my phone, so I can't see people, so that's
Sorry, that was, I was, that was just me, Susan, I was just saying that South Korea's had one of these, that app going since like pretty much the get-go. So that if you, exactly what you described, but, you know, I don't know whether
The technology exists, it's probably as simple as call MIT, replicate it, get the DOH onboard and just put it in Massachusetts and get the PR out there and not wait to do it.
Yep, that's a leadership issue.
Yeah, that's the question I could, um, reach out to the commissioner about.
Yeah.
Reach out to the commissioner, we can reach out to the select board and to our state representatives, because hell, I'll reach out to MIT, I mean, it's just crazy to me, this isn't happening in, in a state like Massachusetts, but anyway.
For the record, my kids don't have cell phones, so.
Okay, well, this might be the chance to get one. Everyone else does, so they'll be safe.
There you go. Um, so my question actually goes back to when Dawn was talking about staffing. Um, I know, you know, obviously, we can't have parents volunteer in the schools, in, in the classrooms this year for very obvious reasons. I was speaking with another parent the other day, can parents volunteer on Zoom? Like if we get everybody Cory-checked, can, can they do, can they do guest readers? Can they be, can they help in breakout groups? Can they do Halloween crafts and, you know, in smaller spaces? So that it, you know, the teachers can, you know, work with kids one-on-one, can we, can we get the, get the parents? I know we can't, we're not gonna hire them as staff, but I know, I know that some parents would volunteer to be Zoom room parents and be able to read, read books and help with, you know, a little bit of breakout space for the, for the kids, can we do things like that?
Yeah, I think that sounds like a great idea to talk to the principals about, because even if, um, we do have, we're still working on some of the camera setups and the setting up some of the technology at Placentino, but the other great, they, they've got some great things going, that they have two screens. So a teacher who's working with remote students is able to see the student works, the, the, each of their workstations on one screen and they're able to see the students themselves on another screen. In kind, students that are in person or remote could have, um, the, the, the teacher can zoom into a second classroom, so we have a teacher sometimes working in two classrooms, so we, we have the technology to do things like that and make it robust so that the teacher could potentially get a little bit of respite while the parents doing that volunteerism, I think that's a great idea that
You're thinking way fancy. You're thinking way fancier than what I was even thinking. I just was thinking like, if, if there's a new kid that comes into the class and the teacher needs to sort of onboard them, there's like a parent could do a read aloud and ask, you know, interact with the students who are the, the regular students that are there. And then the teacher could take that one or two kids to a breakout room and say, this is what we do in our class. These are our norms, this is the platform we're using, this is how you log in, you know, just to, to support the teacher. And maybe just sort of take the stress off the teachers trying to, to, you know, I keep calling it whack a mole, trying to like take out, take out all the, all the problems at once.
No, but you bring up a good point that a second pair of hands, even in a remote setting, doing breakout rooms like that could be very useful. So I certainly will bring that up to particularly the younger ones. I think that, that the breakout would be very useful that way. And I could then see if Dr. Slaney or Mr. Keim wanted to send something out asking for, seeing if the, which teachers might want to volunteer, a remote volunteer like that.
Well, I know the language teachers at the, at Rams were also asking for second adults to, they're all, you know, remote. So for them to do the language and be the second adult maybe to help them.
Then we'll work, we'll work on that, that's great.
Thank you. Dawn?
Susan, so right now, when you have a positive case, I just want to confirm, there's three emails that go out. An email to the school saying we've had a positive case in Placentino or Miller, whichever school. But there's another set of emails and that goes out to the families of that class. Is that correct? You would know if there was a student or staff member in your child's third grade class or your child's seventh grade class. Is that correct?
Yes, so the first group is the close contacts. If you identify people that were within six feet for up to 15 minutes over time, we call them directly. The nurse calls them directly. They know right away, so they don't need the letter to know that they are told you need to stay home, you need to quarantine. We can't make them get the PCR test, but we strongly recommend that because then we know, because then it helps us do more contact tracing if we ever needed to. So they are the first ones who get notified typically of that we have a, you know, a case. And then the second letter, so they will get a letter, but some, that's not my priority letter to get out. The principals will do that. But the next group would be, yes, the classroom or if a cohort of students, depending on whether it's staff or student. And they will get a separate letter saying you're not identified as a close contact. However, someone in your room was positive and you can come to school. Some people choose to quarantine regardless. We know this is anxious time and that's why we give them the benefit of the doubt on that. Then the global letter that you see that all of you get, I then send the letter to the district. Because before I was just sending it to each school, but sometimes the rumor mill can be worse than the reality. So I just said, I'm trying to keep as much confidential as possible, not saying staff or student because we really want to not violate HIPAA. Because the more information you give, it's not trying to hide anything. But when you start to tease down, if, if there's a little detail there, then the stigmatization of a student or a staff member could happen. Because this is a pandemic that people are afraid of. So we really want to, you know, the HIPAA piece is really important to work on. But that letter, have you seen going out? I sent a brief update today, we did have a couple of positive cases, but they had not been in the building. So there was no letter to send to the close contacts or to the classroom in those types of cases.
Thank you for all of that. And, and it, even though you're now putting together the dashboard, which will be on the Holston website, and I assume a link probably in your next letter will go to that as well. You're going to continue to send those, those three pieces of communication with every positive case, right?
Yes, I think what we're talking about is trying to streamline them a little bit. Because now that people are familiar with the language, we can probably cut some of that out and keep to the more, the more important pieces that they need to know.
Okay, and just one quick follow up, which was, I think you hit on that briefly, but I wanted to touch upon it, which is that if it is a class and, and you receive that email that says you weren't a close contact, but there was a positive in your class, those families have the ability to keep their children home for a week or two. Is that correct? They can choose to do that and then remote in?
If we have enough remote opportunities, because now go back to the pre K three. Because we have so many kids in person, pre K to three, for the right reasons, we don't want to now tip the scale over. So if we are not quarantining them, we may not be able to, it doesn't mean we don't want to. But then they might get, you know, support otherwise for those exceptions.
What if their teacher is now in quarantine? If you, and it could be any grade, it could be fifth grade, second grade. If the teacher's in quarantine as a close contact and we are up against, we lose, oh no, we are up against potential staff shortages. Could those students opt to work remotely from home? And the students that absolutely need to come in because there is no backup plan, they can still come in. But you could then decrease that class size and move those kids farther apart?
Yes, but we're, again, being very careful to say who's being quarantined or, you know, those that, it's very tricky because then you sometimes release a little too much information. Sometimes they're going to figure it out because you just, it is obvious, right? So, but we can communicate that as directly as would make it simple to, to kind of assess those situations. We do reserve the right for that reason to say, if we don't think we can staff safely in person, we will make the decision to put everybody in remote because then that's, it might be the best instructional model for them for that reason. But if the teacher can zoom in and the kids can be in person with another adult, either the adult that supports them on a regular basis, or even maybe a health and safety monitor, we will still have them stay in person as long as possible.
Thank you. Peter, you've had your hand up.
Well, as you said, it's, it's a clarification on some of what we were discussing previously. It still doesn't, you know, if there are extraordinary numbers of kids quarantining, it doesn't solve that issue. But the remote classes in pre K through three have a teacher and a second adult. So some of that support of those, of the, of the, of the kids in general, but also the kids who might be visiting for a 10 to 14 day period for quarantining. There is a second adult with a teacher in order to help support them and onboard them in, in that way.
Um, before we go any further, I just want to remind the community, because I'm getting messages, my phone is vibrating off of my desk. The school committee is not monitoring questions that are on Facebook Live on the HCAT page. And the school committee meeting is a meeting that's held in public, but it is not held with the public. So we're not answering questions real time with you. If you have questions, you can reach any of the school committee members on our district website. There's a whole page with all of our faces, names, numbers, et cetera. So we're not being rude, we're not ignoring you, but we are supposed to be in the meeting, discussing things here, conducting our business. We're actually not watching Facebook along with you. So, and, you know, I just want to remind everyone again, because my phone is falling off my table here with people pinging me. So, um, not being rude, but that's, that's not where you're going to reach us. And any other questions? This has been really, um, this has been some really good dialogue. And, and you know, yes, we are getting a lot of questions, whether it's emails or texts or people are calling or reaching out. I know that we're, you know, people are scared, people are concerned. So please continue to feel free to reach out to us via email. Dr. Kuska, Dr. Patello, Mr. Burdade, they have been providing a ton of information and communication. And they are absolutely doing their best to give everybody information as soon as they have it. But this is a global pandemic and it's fluid and things are changing. So just, you know, just, just email and everyone take, you know, a deep breath and we will get through this. There's a lot of good stuff going, happening. So please, think about your questions, send them to us, we absolutely will get back to you. Are there any other questions at all with Susan's data, the dash? I love the dashboard, I'm excited that you're going to be able to put that together. And also in conjunction with this, the chief has, as you all know, has sent us weekly updates of when the colors change, which his emails I thought have been incredibly informative. So he too has been working to update the town website to give more of a dashboard, if you will. So thank you, chief, for that as well. So I'm really looking forward to your weekly updates, Susan.
Yeah, when, when you can see that more in a, in a larger fashion, you'll see that we actually took, Dan and I were working on the exact data that you're referring to from the chief. So when he sends it to us, and actually, if you, if you get it tomorrow, you'll see that we've already put in that last red bar with the 13 out of 100,000 in there. So as soon as we get it from the chief, we're putting it, it, it looks a little different. We're just trying to make it consistent with our other data, but we're using that data from Chief Cassidy as well.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's great. It's a great, you know, showing the collaboration, et cetera. And just to remind people, because this has actually been happening to me, especially if you have Gmail, the emails from the district might be going into your, either the promotional tab or the, I don't even know what it's called.
Updates. The, the updates tab is where mine end up.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, so just make sure you, you check more than just your general inbox. Because I know that some of the messages are, are going to those other tabs. Cynthia?
You can move, you can move that.
I just had a question about the, um, the, um, the dashboard, whether or not that information is being passed on to a larger database for the state of Massachusetts or the National CDC? Or like, where are we tracking like student, the transmission with students? Because I feel like the disaggregated data is more, is important overall.
Yeah, good question. So it wasn't clear at the beginning when the, when Desi started this, but they have a, a, a number that we have to call either myself or one of the nurses, but I've been making those calls. And when and if we get a positive case, I've been calling Desi, reporting the case. Now, they do ask me a couple of specific questions, but they do not share whether it's a staff or student. They do not share the grade level. They are collecting that information because they're using that information to try to assess the hotspots and things like that. So that's a really good question, Cynthia, and that's exactly what the state's doing. So at the beginning, they might not have gotten my first few cases reported because I didn't know that, that's how it got there. I thought it went through DPH. Now that I know shortly thereafter, I've been reporting all those cases, I have one that I didn't report today, so I'll report that tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Great. All right, are we ready to move on to our next agenda item? All right, Susan, go for it quickly before someone has another question.
Is that the leave of absence request?
Yes.
Yeah. We have, so we have a staff member requesting to take an unpaid leave of absence for the remainder of the school year to approve by school committee.
Is there a motion to approve this leave of absence request?
Move by Cynthia.
No, seconded by Anne Louise.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Anne Louise, roll call vote, all in favor, Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey?
Yes.
That is approved. And Lisa, um, Lisa sent out the newsletter, Lisa Koshen sent the newsletter out to us. I thought it was great, Lisa.
Yeah, nice job, Lisa, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I mean, I just wanted to, you know, I feel like it's something we're going to have to repeat every once in a while. And I felt like this was a good way to do it, right before Halloween. It's getting cold, there's a lot of good information out there about mitigating risk. You know, if you just, if you have people inside, wear masks and maybe have a shorter gathering or leave your windows open for better ventilation. I mean, there's a lot of ways you can mitigate your risk. We know we can't eliminate risk, you know? No one is responsible for eliminating all the risk in their lives, you know? But if everyone does their part to mitigate it, hopefully we'll keep the schools open a little bit longer. And that's really the only message I was trying to get out. I mean, clearly, the schools are doing something right if we're not having spread within the schools, at least not that we can document so far. I think that's a really good sign. I really wasn't sure we'd be open as long as we had been open, like I said earlier. So, you know, kudos to the teachers, administrators and staff once again. So anyway, this was just supposed to be a message of support, but I'm happy to go through it.
So, uh, Lisa, concerns? So just another added resource, I, there's an app called My COVID Risk, where you can make sort of a, it helps you make a, a risk assessment of the event that you're trying to, you know, consider. And it's a partnership, I don't know if you've seen it, but it's a partnership with Warren Alpert Medical School of Brown University. And it was created by emergency physicians to give you information you need to know your own COVID risk. And it asks things like, are you going to be indoors and outdoors, wearing masks, ventilation, distancing, all of those things? How many people, how long, et cetera? So it's just another tool in your toolbox.
Yeah, I could link that here somewhere.
Yeah, do you want me to send it to you?
Yeah, if you want to send it to me, I could link it where we say, you know, friendly reminder to be cautious when socializing.
Right.
You know, I could just link it, you know, pretty much anywhere.
Can you guys see that?
I can't see it. But I believe you.
I'll add it on there.
Yeah, I'd be happy to add that, that's easy. Um, I know, you know, normally I, I put this together as a letter, I hope that's okay. I just wanted to keep it short and sweet rather than doing a full newsletter. But I just thought, you know, probably better format for what we wanted to say. But does anybody else have any concerns, feedback?
I thought it was great.
Yeah, I'm sending it to you now, hold on.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the newsletter as amended this evening with the additions from Cynthia?
Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Catherine.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Catherine, all in favor, roll call vote, Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Raffey, yes. Great, the newsletter has now been approved, thank you.
Yeah.
That was the easiest newsletter ever.
Let's keep up the momentum, that was good. Keith, can you, I know that you either sent me a text or email and I'm, I don't want to look for it. Would you mind reporting out on the warrants that have been signed? Or I'm happy to look, I think it was text.
Give me 12 seconds of warning if that.
Sorry, 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 my apologies. Okay, got it right here, never mind. Okay, I signed a warrant in, see, I was just trying to keep you on your toes. Um, I signed a warrant in the amount of $66,848.19. And yeah, that was a school bill warrant. And then the second one was in activity account replenishment for $5,805. So those were signed as well as payroll this week. That is all for that. So we are, um, our business has, uh, we're complete with our business for this evening. Keith, why are you giving me a dirty look? Am I missing something on it? Okay, so we are actually going to adjourn and move into executive session for the purposes of collective, not collective bargaining, of bargaining with non-union personnel. Our next school committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 12th. Next week, the school committee does have a training on November 4th. But our next actual meeting is on November 12th. We will have an update again, obviously, on COVID. And we might have some initial discussion or some information about school improvement goals and plans, just to start that conversation. And Susan and I, I don't want to steal her thunder, but we had a conversation the other day. And she wants to start talking about the strategic plan and planning. And even though it's not due at this moment, she and I were having this conversation and she feels strongly that, you know, now that we're in this transition and changing in education, you know, sort of a perfect time to talk about the strategic plan and how to move forward with that. So pending other workloads and what's going on, we might be able to have initial discussion about that as well. But understanding that we're in a fluid situation, so no promises, but just put that on your radar. So with that, it is 8:33. I'd like to accept a motion to adjourn to move into executive session.
Move by Cynthia.
Seconded by Dawn.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Auntie Dawn. All in favor, roll call vote, Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes, it is 8:34. Good night all, have a wonderful holiday. Mrs. Rafi? Yes, it is 8:34. Good night all. Have a wonderful holiday weekend. I believe we do that thing that most people don't like to do in the fall with the clocks. I think that's this weekend. There is no school on Tuesday, November 3rd. It's election day. Go out and vote. But we wish our teachers and staff a very interesting and educational and even fun professional day. Good night all.
Okay, stay safe, everybody.